Welcome to the November 14th Recreational Space Committee meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is primarily an information session. We'll begin with a presentation. Over the past few years, this committee has identified needs, identified problems, and come up with a plan that will be voted on in a couple of weeks at town meeting. So after the presentation, there'll be plenty of time for questions. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to begin the presentation.
I'll be making some microphone adjustments tonight. It just happened. If we can move to the agenda, it'd be great. So tonight, we're going to quickly go through a couple of topics and spend most of our time talking about the -- more microphone adjustments. And spend some time talking about the different options that are ahead of us as we come to town meeting. Stand here. So we're going to go through who we are. You know, we've identified what the problem is. We're going to come up, we're going to present some solutions to fix the problem, talk about the costs, talk about voting. We'll talk about tax impact, as well as spend some time talking about the timeline should the votes move forward. So with that, we can move on. Recreational Space Committee, real quick, our members, Anthony kicked off. David's been with us as town administrator with great insight throughout the whole process. Chris, on behalf of DPW, with us. Tim, who's our conservation agent. Janice from finance. Jen Hamels, our athletic director. Fortunately, she fell ill today, so had to go home. Glenn here, representing our football, our youth football. Greg representing the YAA. And Bill Flynn is not here yet, but is doing his best to get here on behalf of the school committee in the school. And then myself, I'm Jeff Ryan. I'm here on behalf of the Boosters organization, so. And we also have Mike here from CHA. CHA is our, is the group and organization that put our thoughts on paper and made the changes over and over again as we continue to sort of modify and come to what we think is a great package. But I want to thank CHA because they provided us with just what we asked for, which is So the problem, in summary. The town's grown considerably over the last 20 years. Our forecasted growth, based on what's in Town Hall right now, is for 100 additional homes. And over those past 20 years, there have been no new facilities built, net no new, right? Obviously, we have a new high school and we have some new fields. But actually, when the high school was built, we lost two fields. We lost a JV baseball field, and we lost a practice field. The only thing that I know of that's been built during that whole time would be the Sullivan Field, over on the baseball fields. So net, over the last 20 years, we've added nothing as far as new athletic facilities. Today, organized activities are far more important and far more part of the norm than they were maybe when I was growing up, right? Not that I had one, but the old Daniel Boone, "Put the Daniel Boone hat on, get on your bike, and come back when the streetlights go on," doesn't really happen anymore. Our activities are much more structured and focused, and you can see that in some of the numbers that we have here tonight. Our current fields, they're overused. It's just that simple. If we take a look at soccer up here, we have a total of 514 athletes playing soccer on what amounts to really two fields. And those are unique athletes. We don't, we're not counting somebody twice because they played fall and then they played again in the spring. So we have two fields, we have 514 kids, grass fields. In, you know, in our climate, where we get a lot of rain, especially as move on in the season, those fields, Chris and his team do a fantastic job keeping those fields as usable as they can be. But it's a numbers game, and we're not going to win on two grass fields with 500 kids. We look at basketball. Basketball's currently at 266 athletes, youth, whatever, playing basketball. We have one, one regulation-sized basketball court. Those of you that have been here for a while, you understand what the courts like at Howard, and you understand what the courts like at Roseville. If you ever bored at the Howard School, I would measure from the baseline to the back of the backboard on both of those, and you'll see there's more than a little difference between those two. We only have one basketball court that's regulation size for 266 kids. And then we can go on from there to there to there. But the point is, the town has grown over the last 20 years. The town is growing rapidly right now, and we haven't added a facility, whether it be a grass field, whether it be a basketball court. We've done nothing to try to keep up with what's changing and what's coming. Some of our other fields, we have an issue with flooding. We have an issue with just the maintenance of them because of the amount of time that it's being used. High school sports here are limited because so many teams have to get on the field. So nobody gets a full run of practice time that they want. And those are just some of the issues, again, that we've identified as we've sat and we've gone through this. How do we fix it? Again, we've been meeting since 2019. Our first meeting was January of 2019. Obviously, we're in November of 2020. We've put about four years' worth of work into this, and we're happy that we're coming to a vote sometime soon. We've toured every athletic facility. We've talked to everybody. Greg, Glenn, myself, have over 40 years in youth sports. We've all been presidents of the different organizations. And we've got a great committee that also has done a great job identifying issues. We're going to try to address many of these tonight, right? First, the number of fields for youth sports. We can address that with what we're proposing for the Russo intergenerational park. We can increase the number of fields for high school sports. We have a proposal for the field, as you walked in today, right outside the doors here. We can look to, we're going to try to increase the number of facilities to meet our current needs. We heard the need for pickleball courts. We've talked about basketball courts. We're going to add a tennis court, or we'd like to add a tennis court, and we'll explain why. And then in addition, on the Russo complex, there's an opportunity to put in a bunch of walking trails. So a little bit of something for everybody, and hopefully, everything together alleviates a logjam that we currently have in town and we will continue to have moving forward. Growth, we've talked about it a little bit. In 2010, there were just under 7,000 residents in town. The 2020 census has us at 7,700, increasing at about 11 and 1/2%. Current building permits, I'm not going to read them all, but you can read them. But basically, based on just the current building permits, it'll increase us to 8,700 people, residents, in this town. The growth is happening fast. At our last town meeting, I'm sorry, the town meeting in June of 2020, we voted to purchase the Russo land and move forward with this project. With that, we talked about coming back with choices. We said we would come back and present somewhat of an à la carte menu, and that's what we're here to do tonight, to provide you with a couple of different choices. There are four articles that can potentially be on the warrant for the town meeting. The first article talks about the Russo facility, and it includes an indoor facility for basketball. The second article is the Russo facility without the indoor facility for basketball. So obviously, if one of those passes, the other doesn't get voted on. Third is some improvements for the high school, in the high school fields. And fourth are basically some pickleball courts, redoing a basketball court over at the Howard School, adding a tennis court and adding a basketball court back here. So the selectmen will place these on the warrant sometime in the next couple of days, and we will go from there. So at this point, I want to turn it over to Greg, and Greg's going to walk us through Article Number One, and what that looks like.
I'm not as tall as Jeff, so I'm going to bring this down just a little bit and try not to have the feedback. Thanks, Jeff. Article One, as Jeff mentioned, is the intergenerational complex on Lincoln Street with the basketball gym in it. So you can see Article One is presented. If we get into the highlights of the intergenerational park, the next slide. Some of the highlights, there'll be two turf fields, as you saw outside at the presentations out there. It will meet the requirements for soccer, which, as Jeff mentioned, is the largest sport in town in terms of the number of players. There's also space for football to account for the youth football organization, lacrosse, field hockey, et cetera. This town currently does not offer lacrosse. It's one of the faster-growing sports in the U.S. We do not have it at the youth level or at the high school level because we just don't have the facilities for it. We do have field hockey at the high school level. We'd love to be able to offer it as another option to kids at the youth level. Some of the other highlights includes lighting, so you can extend the time for practice space and things like that. And then maintenance on the turf fields is obviously lower than the grass fields because the water just, you can just make it work. I mean, at the high school today, we could get rain most of the day, and then kids are practicing out there in the afternoon because of the turf fields. Also on the complex are walking trails, a small playground, a grass area for young children to play in as well, and some of those trails will be ADA accessible. I'm sorry for the feedback here. Is that better? Can you guys still hear me well? All right. A couple of the next bullet points on here, Glenn will actually cover in the next article. So Article Two will cover, as Jeff mentioned, the complex without the basketball gym, but in place of the gym would be an outdoor basketball court, four pickleball courts, along with restrooms and storage. And then the field closest to Lincoln Street, which is on the far left there, the proposal includes parking, so for those of you that have kids that play soccer in the spring or fall, and they're cold days, and you'd be able to just park right, drive right up, park, and could actually watch the games from your car, as well as grandparents, things like that. Moving over to the indoor basketball facility, again, kudos to CHA. They did a really nice job with the aesthetic for the basketball gym. It had more of a farm-type look to it. So this gym would have basically the same number of basketball courts as the high school gymnasium, which would be one full-size court, and then two smaller courts that the youth basketball could use, both the two side by side, and then the one full-length for some of our older players. In addition, that court will be big enough for things like basketball, indoor pickleball, volleyball, and so forth. And then if you didn't see the layout outside of this room, this is the proposal with the basketball gym on the right-hand side there, and it also has an overhang along with concessions that, you know, so people can buy like a snack shack, so to speak, bathrooms in and out, meeting space, storage, and so forth. And then on the next slide, this is actually the gymnasium. So this is another look at the gym with the two fields, along with, it shouldn't state, it's obviously 24,000 square feet, as well as parking for 115 cars, which we believe is enough. We did look at the potential to have some ancillary parking across the street where they're going to be building a large warehouse, but that just didn't work out. So we worked a lot with the footprint, as Jeff made reference to earlier. We went through a lot of iterations for this project to make it work and get as much parking as possible. There's enough in and out between games that we don't think that we'd need more than 115 spots. There is no street parking, so we would need to utilize just the parking that exists at the space, but we do feel that that is sufficient. And then the next slide is just another rendering of the gym, just gets into a little more detail in terms of what is in the gym. So you'll note on the far top right, field storage, which includes storage for just the gym, as well as other field storage for the various organizations. So the Youth Athletic Association, the Youth Football Association, they'd have their own space to keep their stuff, so there's not a lot of co-mingling of equipment and things getting lost and whatnot. And then you can see up at the top where the concessions are, and the bathrooms and the locker rooms as well. And at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Glenn to talk about the same facility minus the basketball court.
Thank you, Greg. As Greg mentioned, this is going to be, this would be Article Two. It'll be the same, almost the same thing as what Greg just talked about, minus the indoor basketball facility. If you can switch to the next slide, you'll notice, if this pointer works, right here is where the basketball building was. In lieu of that, there would be a full outdoor basketball court, four pickleball courts, and a small building, support building, which would encompass restrooms, a possible snack shack-type window area, and some meeting space, and possibly some storage. The parking right here would increase from what Greg said to about 129. We'd still have the parking out front here, as Greg mentioned earlier, about people being able to watch games when it's cold out, stay in their cars. There's also an area in front of this building where buses could pull up and drop off players right there. Same storage buildings, one here on the left, and again, another one out of the backfield. You can jump to the next one. So as the overview, again, this area where the basketball building was, it would be a small facilities-type building, bathrooms, possible concessions, storage, meeting space, your full-size basketball court, and your four pickleball courts, and again, adding, bringing up the parking up to about 129. We have the two multipurpose turf fields. Both would be lighted and fenced. There is a water feature that you see here right now, which is currently more, looks like a little bit of a swamp, that would be rehabbed into a water feature. The walking trails in total are about a mile and a half of all these gray trails here and the brown ones. The gray would be handicap accessible, maybe a concrete type walkways. And then about half of that of what we have here mileage-wise would be walking trails to the woods, to the forest. There's a playground Greg had mentioned right here, a small playground for the young ones, and a small grassy area for the siblings to play on also. All right, thank you. And here would be the small building that I was talking about, in place of where the large basketball facility would be. Buses pull up, there's your basketball court, pickleball courts. We have bathroom facilities here, a family-type facility, a small porch. Again, this would be, this would look almost like a small barn-type look. We have some storage, meeting space, and room for possible future expansion of the And that's it for me.
Article Three basically takes the field directly out of the doors you came in from today and turf's it. Our current baseball field has drainage problems. It's had drainage problems around home plate in particular, where every year it requires a decent amount of work just to keep it dry. The outfield, actually, before I go there, I want to say, so this past baseball spring, this past spring, Justin May, who owns a local business in town, spent a lot of time, donated a lot of his time, and worked with Jack Outerbridge, who's our baseball coach. They spent endless hours out there reworking the base paths and the turf and everything. And they really worked their heart out to get that baseball field back up to snuff. If you go out there and look at it today, the base path is once again got weeds and everything else growing on it. It's a very hard field in its, maybe it's its location or what's underneath, but it's a very hard field to keep in tip-top shape for baseball on an annual basis. So what the proposal is here is to turf the entire area. In doing that, the outfield will provide as a structure where other sports can be played. It will meet the minimum requirement for soccer. And basically, how it goes, if you can fit soccer on a field, you can then fit football, you can then fit lacrosse, you can then fit field hockey. So basically, you can fit any other sport that would take place. So that would allow for a practice field. It would also allow the school to use it during the day for other activities. But right now, what happens in the school, school gets out, and quickly what happens is field hockey practices in random order, right? But field hockey practices, football practices, and then the field is turned over to youth football. Field hockey and football often have to share the field, and neither team gets to practice what they would consider to be the full amount that they want to practice. And we also put our youth kids out there late at night. We all drive by, we all see them out there practicing. Sometimes their helmets look like they're twice as big as the rest of their body, but it's still neat. As long as they don't lean too far forward, I think they do OK. There's been, as Greg talked, at the youth level, there's been requests for lacrosse. Right now, we cannot do that based on the fact that we don't have enough field time. And there's also been requests for other sports, like middle school, girls' soccer, things along those lines, where once again, we can't do that right now because we don't have the field time. So this proposal will hopefully address those issues and allow us to better meet the needs. So looking at the proposal, again, it is just the field located outside these doors. The footprint is the footprint of that field. Obviously, the baseball diamond stays in place, and you can see that the soccer field in the outfield, it does fit, and it does work to meet the space and the requirements Go to the next one. The next one's just a straight, you know, just a straight overhead rendering of the And then the only thing in addition would be lighting, because as we move forward, as you see this time of year, or go back two or three weeks, it was still getting dark before 6 o'clock. So the lighting would allow us to get the full use of the field. Anything else? Article Four. Article Four addresses a couple of issues. It's the smallest in terms of work and obviously in terms of cost. But basically, what this does is puts four pickleball courts over by the Council on Aging. It repairs the facility, the one basketball court that's by the Howard School. It'll clean up the footprint, the footprint might get slightly bigger, but put some new hoops, things along those lines. If you've been over there, you'll understand that that needs to be repaired. In addition, at the high school, it will add one tennis court. As much as we did a great job building this facility, somehow we left off a tennis court when we were building it. High school tennis matches are five, they take place five matches at a time. So what happens right now is our visiting teams come, everybody gets out there, everybody plays four matches, an hour, you know, depending on how good, how bad, an hour, 45 minutes, an hour and a half later. When one match is done, another match will go out there and play. But often, what ends up happening is kids end up sitting around for, both teams end up sitting around for 45 minutes, waiting for that fifth match to be played. So when it was built, it really should have been built with five. It was built with four. We have the opportunity to address that now. And then alongside that, we would like to put in one full-size outdoor basketball court, of which we do not have in town. We do not have an outdoor full-size basketball court. You go to Bridgewater when you want to do that right now. So those are the issues that we hope to address with Article Four. Some overheads. The, if you're wondering why it's not directly in the grass, right behind the Council on Aging, there's all sorts of septic that is there. So those fields have to be pushed over to the left a little bit to make, I mean, the pickleball courts have to be pushed over to the left a little bit to make that work. And then the basketball court is on the existing footprint of the current basketball court. Might, like I said, it might be a few feet bigger here or there, but it's not an attempt to get a full-size basketball court in there. It's just something that the students can use over on the Howard side. And then this is behind the, behind the school here. You can see that there are four courts in play. We'd add the fifth court, and then there's room for a full-size basketball court next All right. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to David and go through the costs.
Everybody else got really nice pictures. I didn't. So basically, as originally proposed for the Board of Selectmen for the warrant, there will be five warrant articles. Four of them will address this issue this evening in reference to the field. So Article One, if you want to build the entire complex, the walking trails, all the turf, and the basketball building, you're going to be looking at an estimated cost of a little over $18 million, and that's going to require a 2/3 vote at town meeting because that will be a barring article. My next slide is going to let you know what the tax impact is, what the actual annual cost is. Article Two is if you want to build that complex, but you do not want the basketball. Either you don't want it, or you just feel like you shouldn't spend that much money, you'd be looking at a project cost of about $8.7 million. Obviously, the difference is the basketball building. Again, that will require a 2/3 vote at town meeting, again, because it will be a barring article. At the baseball field, we'll take the current grass field and we'll do an overlay and create all turf, and as Jeff explained, that's going to give you the ability to not only have the baseball field, but to also have soccer, lacrosse. The cost on that is just under $2 million, and again, that will require a 2/3 vote because it will be a barring article. And the last one, which is basically all the courts, so again, as Jeff explained earlier, is the courts behind this building, the one basketball court and the one tennis court, the four pickleball courts at the Council on Aging, and the additional basketball court at the Howard School. The total cost for that would be about $350,000. I am proposing to the Board of Selectmen that we use free cash, that's already been certified for this year. That would only require a majority vote. There will be no tax impact because that is money that was unspent from previous year. Next slide, please. So this is exactly how it will cost on an annual basis, it will cost you pertaining to your taxes. In Article One, as we said, the cost is about $18, a little over $18 million all told. That means our debt service. So when we go to town meeting, we have one budget, which is administered under our treasurer, Scott Goldar, and you vote on it, and it's just all the debt that we've already incurred, just a straight number, mathematical number, but town meeting is already approved. This is what it costs us on an annual basis to service that debt. Think of it like you just have a mortgage, you know what your monthly payment is. So your annual payment would be about $1.7 million, and on the average single-family home as currently constituted, that's going to have an impact of about $383 per year. If Article One passes, we will not have to worry about Article Two, meaning Article Two will not even be voted on, because Article Two really is just an option if Option One is not chosen. So if Article Two is the one that does pass, again, an $8.7 million bill, you're looking at about $950,000 for debt payment on an annual basis, and you could see a tax impact of a little over $200 per year based on the average single-family home. Article Three, the overlay at the Article three, the overlay at the turf field, again, you could see about $218,000 as your debt service on an annual basis, and that's about $50 per year on the average tax bill. So in breaking down these numbers, you know if only one passes, you can see exactly what the average annual tax impact will be. If multiple pass, I want to make sure that you had that math as well. So if Article one, the full fields with the basketball building, and Article three, the overlay here at the high school, your total tax impact on the average, single-family home is a little over $400 per year. And in Article two, again, the complex without the basketball gym, but also doing the overlay turf field at the high school, your full tax impact on average is about $264 for a single-family home. Anthony?
So in addition to the capital expense, one consideration is always what it's going to cost to operate annually. So there will be some equipment purchased, although not substantial. They'll need a groomer for the turf fields. The turf fields are nice because the maintenance is actually pretty minimal. All of the lines and numbers are like stitched into the actual field, so they won't be striping and painting of lines. So that machine's about $8,000. And then, the Board of Selectmen intends on entering into an agreement with the YAA and youth football to establish their contributions, so it would be a dedicated portion of the user fees that would go towards the general maintenance of the building and things like utility costs. We anticipate the electrical cost being around $10,000 to $15,000 per year. The DPW would be responsible for maintaining a large portion of this, so that would include things like the grass outside of the turf fields, would need to be mowed, seeded, we need to account for things like mulching, planting, seeding, and general maintenance like would do to any open space. So it's definitely possible that this could result in the need for additional staffing or possibly be absorbed by the current staffing levels. If we assume that a half of a employee is needed to be dedicated towards this additional space, the cost would be about $31,000 per year. The structure for, once this is built, if passed, would be that the Board of Selectmen would nominate a, or would appoint a governing body. The primary focus of this governing body would be to oversee time use, maintenance schedules, things along those lines, to make sure that the time is fairly appropriated between the different organizations in town. And those appointees would be one from the YAA, one from youth football, and then one just at-large member. Next one, Christine, please. So some key dates to keep in mind. So this committee was established four years ago, almost to the day. So over the past four years, we've been working on this project and these recommendations. In June of 2020, as Jeff had said, is when we purchased the Russo property. And then, just a few weeks ago, this committee presented all of this to the Board of Selectmen. We're here tonight, November 14th, for the public forum. Town meeting is December 5th. And then, assuming it's passed, the design of selection would take place over the winter, likely in January. Then the design would take about three months, and we expect construction to begin in later spring of this year, with a completion of fall of 2023. Then it would be open for the spring 2024 season. And that's all we had in the formal presentation. Now is your time to ask questions, give us feedback, whatever you would like. There's a microphone up front, if you don't mind just stepping forward and coming up to the microphone. And this entire presentation will be posted on the website. I saw a couple of people taking pictures, but just so you know, it will be posted online.
How you doing, Anthony?
What's going on, Neil?
Well, that's all we bought the land for, but I just got a couple of questions.
I think it might be on.
I gotta get out of here quick. I don't know if the mic's on or not, I see a green light. He don't even want to listen to me. Whatever.
Oh, there it goes.
All right. Just real quick, we're going to borrow the money, so you do the Cadillac, which is number one, and you get the building. Who would be the general contractor? Do we have a general contractor for that?
That would go up to bid.
All right. Go up to bid, and can I ask Scott a couple of questions? We're going to borrow money, and what kind of note would that be? Fixed rate, like will you go to a bank and take the loan out, or how will we go about doing it?
So we would go up to bond. The bond is a long, that's like a mortgage, that's the long-term note. The buildings have a 30-year lifespan you can pay back the debt on, the fields are a 15-year. So when we go out to bond, everything would be broken down, and whoever gave us the best interest rate would get awarded that, and we would pay them back over the course of... So the fields would be over 15 years, the buildings would be over 30. So the debt service would come down every year on that. But it's just like a mortgage, basically.
On that note here, we have, Dave, maybe this is your answer to the question. Now, just residential pays this, business in the town don't pay on this?
They absolutely would, it would go in the tax rate, it would be in the tax levy, as would anything else.
So the businesses will also pay?
Absolutely.
So any structure in this town would be paying it, in homeowners?
Yeah.
And so, so when we collect the money every year on this, right, it'll go strictly for this project, right? So say like the yearly, you bring in, say, a million dollars for the project, through the taxes, and of only debt to the bank would be, say, $500,000. We'll keep $500,000 in that account and let it keep going, then every year, then as the houses keep coming in, being built, you'll be adding more money to that. So it's a separate account, like my mortgage, I have a mortgage, principal, interest, oh, I don't have one no more, thank God, but then my electric bill comes in and all this stuff. Is it brokered down like that? Are you following me?
Sure I am. So not exactly. So when we go to town meeting, we have a debt budget, they get 7510 off the top of my head. So you'll approve that, it'll be $3 million. We will collect all the taxes that come in, and then Scott, out of that appropriation, will pay that bill. I will tell you, you've hit on something that I didn't want to really discuss tonight because I don't want to oversell it. One of the negatives that we have is growth. We know we need to make some investments into our community to be able to facilitate that growth. But one of the benefits to that is additional revenue. So in these numbers, none of it takes into account more homes, while more commercial. So when I say to you, for example, the average tax bill is $434 on today's average, single-family home, if we have 100 more homes built, that impact to you actually is reduced because you are broadening out the tax bill, having more people paying for it. But you don't collect more money, you only collect what the bill is because that's what's approved at town meeting.
All right, and real quick, I know we've got a meeting in Cadillac. Number one's the big one. I always say go big because I always say, why don't we just go bigger? That's my point. And the timeframe, you say to build it'd be like four or five months from, is this a whole project, all these articles, it'll be done?
Yeah. Is that correct? This is our engineer from the front.
If the building is selected, the site would probably take four or five months, but if the building is selected, that would take a little longer.
That's what I was saying, that'd be office quick.
Mike, do you?
I was just saying, the building would take a little bit longer, that four to five months, that four to five months is for the site construction work. But if the building's selected, the building would take a little bit longer to build.
And that's a metal building, and who, have you reached out to who you'd be using? I know it goes out to bid and whoever comes under that, but I've done metal buildings in the past, and you can get real lousy ones at Home Depot, go to Lowe's, or you can get a Cadillac one. If they do go with number one, which I really like, but I ain't going down that road because I'm on a fixed income tour, and there's a lot of people that are on fixed incomes that can't afford, taxes going up one bit. But I mean, make sure it's a quality building, don't say, oh, we had to fit in the budget, we nickled and dimmed, then the roof leaks, the seals on the screws and all this stuff ain't working right, then all of a sudden, you're going to pay for a lot of repairs.
Yeah. I was just going to say, we... Massachusetts has general procurement rules, so when our design engineer goes out to bid, all of that, there's a requirement. They're going to have to have some type of pre-certifications based on exactly what specs they were looking for. I'll give you an example. Even though we weren't building anything, we selected CHA, who's done an excellent job for us, but we had pre-qualifications. They couldn't just come in and say, hey, we're fresh out of school, we've never done this before, give us a check, and we'll figure it out on the fly. So we'll do the exact same thing when we go to build it. All of the people that will be eventually selected following procurement laws, they will have the experience in this field.
One last thing, for revenue, I don't know if we brought in somebody for a name of the park, like, you know, like Gillette, all these big things, maybe a big business might want to hang their name up there, give a donation like 50, 100,000.
Yeah. No, to be honest with you, I was going to talk to you because I was figuring for 250 grand, we could name it Conley Park. The truth of the matter is, is that if everybody recalls, I'm the one that negotiated with Russo, and we bought 16 acres for $600,000, a very reasonable price. And one of those reasons is because he did not want to see it get mass-developed. So as part of that arrangement, we had agreed that we would enshrine his family name and call it the Russo Park in the future, which I thought was a pretty fair deal. They've been a long family in town, so it will definitely be the Russo Intergenerational Park if it's built.
There are other opportunities for sponsorship, though, like the building specifically rather than the entire park. Speaking of revenue, yeah, scoreboards, we've also considered using, if the fieldhouse is built, the basketball courts, there's potential revenue options with that as well, hosting tournaments and things.
One last thing, are we going to have cameras down there? Cameras, so, and where would they be? Just a recorder, would they be in the police station? If there's a problem, they can just flick the switch and see what's going on down there?
Yeah, that's what we envision, is I will have security cameras tied into the police department, and I will have them, we need to have them on walking trails because I want to make sure people are safe back there for obvious reasons. But yes, we want to, it's a vast, it's a good investment. We have to make sure that we protect it as best as we can.
Thank you, gentlemen, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Yeah, come on down.
Hello, I'm Joe West. Hello, I am Joe West. I just, I like the Lincoln Street, but two issues that I don't know if you guys already addressed and not, but when you leave the facility, taking that left, going towards Honeydew, it's already terrible, and there's so many accidents over near the post office, where all the fields are. I don't know if you guys addressed anything?
David, do you want to?
So you may recall, about a year and a half ago, we came to town meeting, and we rezoned Lincoln Street so that way we could have a large warehouse, industrial warehouse to be built there. Again, those numbers are not calculated as part of what the tax rate will be, because that's going to bring in $1 to $2 million per year, once it's up and operational. So again, that's going to help to defray some of this cost. But the second benefit to that is twofold. One is, is that we required the developer to also build a sidewalk all the way up Lincoln Street at his cost. So Lincoln Street, all the way from South Elm down to 106, we'll have a brand-new sidewalk because we want to make sure, as we work on this project, that people can safely walk it up and down that street. The last is, is that again, at his expense, is that he is going to realign Lincoln Street, where right now, it's a little kitty-corner to Crescent, is that he's already purchased the Dempsey House, he is going to take that house down, realign that road so that way it'll come into an actual intersection with Crescent Street, and put a set of lights there, and we're also going to get additional lanes to make it wider along with turn lanes. So the hope is, is that we're going to make it safer by doing all that work.
That was my other issue. When you get off the highway, you know, going towards Lincoln Street, there's a bad bottleneck already, like before the gas station, I don't know if they're going to make lanes, like a right turn-only lane or something to...
You got it.
You know?
Yes. Currently, there's one lane, there will be three, there will be a left-hand turn lane to go to Crescent, there will be a pass-through lane going straight down 106, and there'll be a right-hand turn lane going onto Lincoln Street, all signalized at that signal.
And my question was, I saw the 150 units, like, I think it was like right to state, what is that, if you could?
So the state, this past legislative session passed an as-of-right development law that municipalities that are either on or adjacent to MBTA commuting areas must abide by, or, if you don't, sacrifice being able to get access to future state grants. We're still working through all of the regulation on it, but at this year's town meeting, there'll be a proposal because you'll have to make a decision whether you accept it or not. Originally, it was for 750 units by right, and many of us are small communities, and I made a presentation to the board, and the board clearly wasn't happy with it. But many of us are small communities, argued with our state delegation, because we only have 3,000 households in the entire town. If I had 750 units, I'm increasing it by almost 25%, which just really isn't fair. If you want to live in a place of high density, go to Brockton or Fall River, that's fine. If you want to live in a place without a lot of people and lower density, you come to West Bridgewater. The legislature fortunately has heard some of that and has reduced it, in theory, from 750 to 150. We're waiting for the final rules from DHCD, Department of Housing, Community and Development, but assuming that they pass, is that it is going to require a town like the size of West Bridgewater to parcel out an area, about 50 acres, and to allow a developer to build 150 units without having to get town approval. All they'd have to do is get site plan approval, meaning parking, handicap spots, make sure you have appropriate sewer. But right now, anybody that wanted to build that logic of development would have to either get a variance or a special permit, which we would deny, because we've never allowed anything more than a two-family to be built in town. It is specifically for the fact that most communities our size always say no, that the legislation passed this. They're putting it under the umbrella of a housing crisis, saying that we don't have enough units for sale for people to make sure the homes are affordable, and the only way to change that is to put more supply into the system. So for West Bridgewater, that is at least constituted right now, is 150 units that a developer by right will be able to come in and build. So taking very conservative numbers, assuming town meeting approves that, at 150 units, just times that by three people, that's why we're coming up with those numbers.
Is that going to be a percentage of subsidized housing, or is it 100% subsidized?
None of it is constituted as required to be affordable. The town has a right to be able to make up to 10% affordable, but quite frankly, I don't believe in this legislation, I don't mind saying it, but even for those, for the people that do, one of the big issues was is that the legislator never mandated that at least some of it had to be affordable. Quite frankly, this was just a sell-out to developers, I'm just going to say it like it is. So anyway, so with that said, the town does have a right, at least under the most recent regulation that's been drafted, not approved yet, is that when we bring the bylaw to you at your town meeting in May, is it does appear that you will have some local self-determination to mandate that 10% of it be affordable.
I thought 10% was required by the state for projects that size, no?
So the only thing that's required right now is what they refer to as a 40B complex. They're, a 40B skirts all of that local regulation, but it's not done as right by right, it still needs to get site plan review and special permit approval through the zoning board of appeals, but that requires 25% of it to be affordable. And again, I'm just going to get my soapbox for 30 seconds. Affordable is not a fair statement, because affordable is defined by Mass General Law as 80% of market conditions. So the current, think about what brand-new home being built right now sells for less than 500 grand. 500, affordable is 400. That's not affordable to somebody who's making $40,000 a year. But again, that's the law is currently constituted.
Thank you for answering the questions.
Hi, my name's Maureen Ellis, 24 Pearl Road. In full disclosure, I do work for the West Bridgewater Public School, but I am here as a resident. I just had a couple of questions, but first, I just want to say, we did a great job you guys did, the Recreation Committee, putting this together and thinking about the kids and their athleticism, but a couple of questions I have. So I just wanted to confirm that the use of these facilities would not be used by school... that the use of these facilities would not be used by school athletes?
It would be a mixed use.
So I was informed that they would not bus over, for proposal one and two, that they would not bus over anyone from the schools to those facilities?
It's been a consideration by the athletic director in the school. They have the opportunity to do so if they choose. They definitely have access, full access to the...
But that would be an additional cost for the busing?
It would be, yep.
Okay. And I appreciate you bringing up the growing number of houses because the concern I have as a resident is that with our numbers increasing, we have the statement of interest in to build another school. And that is going to be coming up. We find out the end of November about the potential of that. So I'd be concerned about the money that's happening from a taxpayer's standpoint for us voting on this. And then, again, behind that will be another school potentially. So that's just a little concern I have. And then you mentioned the maintenance and the cost of it would be, I believe, around thirty-one thousand if we did the proposal one and two?
Right.
So would anything be offset? Like, you mentioned tournaments and things like that, would there be other...
That's definitely a possibility. So there's things like concessions, things like potential revenue with sponsorships, and then hosting outside tournaments for a fee. Those are definitely options that we can consider. There's also potential that that could increase the expense, more maintenance, a person to manage. If we were to start hosting tournaments, we'd need someone to manage. Maybe it'll be a volunteer. We're not sure what that would look like right now.
All right, and so just to clarify, so the majority of this usage would be for the youth athletics? Not so much for the school?
Jeff.
Talking about the Russo complex?
Yes.
You would have the priority at the Russo complex?
Okay.
And the school would sort of be secondary then?
Okay.
Right, when you came to the high school, it would have to be reversed, where the high school would be the priority?
Okay.
And the youth could be the secondary?
Okay. It does. Is there a possibility on the articles one and two of it being more in a phase style? It's a whole lot of money upfront. So I'm wondering, was there ever discussion about it being phases? Okay, yeah, and it's just easier to do it in a full... Okay.
Decided that it would be too much disruption in the area?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mo McCarthy, 23, Captain Carlson Way. First of all, I want to commend you all on the time you spent putting this together and especially packaging it the way you did so that the public does have options on what we can or can't do. That's going to make it a lot easier. I've probably got a ton of questions, but only a couple at this moment. And that is, let's assume that we don't vote for the gym and we have a basketball court there. Would we still plan on putting another one at the high school, or could we eliminate that?
Jeff, do you want to take it?
So our thought on the basketball court there was that we're still short. We still, at this time, you know, even with, we'd have one indoor at a regulation size, assuming that the one behind the high school passes, we'd have one outdoor. Putting that third basketball court there was to serve a couple purposes. One, to have a second outdoor court for people to play. Two, if you've been to fields and locations with multi-field, there's always a group of kids that aren't participating in the sport.
Right.
And we need to provide them something to do. You know, we looked at this, the playground is really here towards the younger ones that wouldn't necessarily be on a court, whether it be a pickleball court or a basketball court. And then, you know, from there, so we tried to take care of the young, the infant type, toddler type at the playground. We tried to, our thought was that then the other kids, or even the kids that just might have the game too from that, it would still provide them something to do there while other activities are taken place as well.
Do we have organized youth basketball in town?
Yes.
Is it big?
We have, I'd have to back out, but probably two hundred players. Yeah, through the West Bridgewater Athletic Association's activity.
Do we use the high school gym?
Very minimally because the seasons overlap. So we basically get a couple of weeks at the end of the high school basketball season. So a lot of the kids have to play in our gym, which Jeffrey and I have established earlier, which is just not a safe gym, I've seen myself in it.
I would agree, I know surrounding towns struggle with the same issues. Many sports are occurring at the same time.
Right.
So there isn't enough...
And I will say, we do have a wonderful relationship with Jen. We have our director here, and we text often and try to work out schedules to make it work for everyone. But the time of year for basketball is the same for all organizations. And they have so many teams practicing because it's one university school, it's a high school that has middle school teams. So, just to give you an example, my oldest daughter, she was in seventh grade and went to a middle school team. They were actually practicing at the elementary school, which is where the team, there are twenty kids practicing. They can experience a lot of things. So even for Jen and her teams, it's hard to find space for anybody. They're practicing until nine o'clock in the morning. So this is prepared on both sides here.
And limited seasons too.
Yeah, and then what happens, Mo, too, is when there's a game, it throws off everybody's ability to practice. Right, so they just break some things that I'm not sure.
How about the baseball field? Is that open to the public, or could it be? And we're putting lights up there, so my last question is, I think, again, as the lady just mentioned, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't try and sell this property to other groups to generate revenue. AAU, I mean, there's a ton of outside people trying to look for...
I mean, obviously, the priority would go towards the town.
Of course.
Youth sports and high school sports. But then after that, it would be trying to generate some additional revenue, whether it's being club soccer teams or, you know, AAU on the basketball side or something. If we've been having some discussions about renting out some, but youth ball fields for clubs, softball teams as well.
Sure. And I know bids, of course, they haven't gone out yet, but the economy of scale, let's assume we vote in the Russo complex, but vote down the high school. Would we get economy of scale on a contractor doing just one or both? Would you guess or not?
Hard to say.
So the Russo complex is already so large, you're getting some economy of scale there. So it's going to say, I'm just adding the baseball field, which would increase that a lot?
Yeah, my last question is, what's the life of turf, depending on averages? Do you have any idea?
Mike, do you want to take that one, too?
Yeah, it's about ten years.
Turf by itself, do you have any wider guesses about that cost of just the turf? We're going to face that again in ten years or less.
The turf replacement on, say, that large soccer field, the turf replacement in today's dollars would be four to five hundred thousand dollars.
So, and one thing we want to keep in mind is, this is why this was an all-encompassing package instead of just looking at it in phases. Because if we can have two fields up at the Russo complex, and we also did this turf overlay at the baseball field, which also has soccer and all across, or field hockey on it, it allows some rotation on it, and that's why we're hoping to be able to get a longer life. If you build just one field, you're going to overuse that court. So by having multiple fields, it gives us an opportunity to be able to extend the life of each and every single one of them. It's also why, after speaking with Anthony, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, we'd originally thought about maybe having YAA and/or youth football do some of the maintenance on the field. It would lower some of the expense. But the reality of that is, is that if we can use a current staff member, although we're showing the equivalent of what that cost is, that person's already on the payroll and doing work on behalf of the town. So we're not really incurring marginal increase in cost. The point that I'm getting at is, is that it allows us to have a professional that goes up there and regularly maintains it instead of just hoping that a volunteer goes up on a Saturday afternoon when all of a sudden at the last minute they get a phone call to go to a birthday party. So we think that if we can do all of those items, that we're going to be able to get a longer extended life of all the fields.
Hi, Jessica Ozier. First, the eight thousand dollars for that piece of equipment that you said that would have to be bought, is that written in to one of those articles?
It is not, the operating costs are not.
So is there a different article, like if this is, is there like a fifth article that's going to be brought up to say, we need eight thousand dollars?
The operating costs would be part of the, most likely, the DPW budget when the time comes, so in 2024, an additional... Or that, the eight thousand could be a capital item in a couple of years, but the additional money for things like mulch, the general maintenance, would be part of the DPW budget come 2024.
Do we have one of those machines now doing the football field?
The school does have one, yes.
So this will be an additional, just if that complex, like, we won't need that for the baseball field? We'll just need it for the soccer field?
Right, the school already does have one.
This may sound like a stupid question, but can you play tennis on a pickleball court?
I think it's about a quarter of the size of a tennis court.
Say it again?
The pickleball court is about a quarter of the size of a tennis court, I believe.
All right, so there'll be no tennis courts at the soccer fields?
Correct.
Only pickleball, okay. Did you look into doing a bubble on one of the soccer fields at some point? Like, did anyone look into the price of that to extend that field? Like at Union Point, how they have the bubbles? Just if that's something down the line? I mean, then you can use that soccer field through the winter, getting more income from club sports and things like that. I don't know if...
No, we didn't look at that. I mean, I guess it's something we could always entertain, but obviously that would be more expensive and maybe that's part of a phased project, you know? One item I do want to just go back to for a moment. Whenever you do a project this size, and you know if you've done any addition work at your house or built a house, you always have to have some contingency built in. So if you just estimate, just to use nice, easy numbers, of ten percent contingency on a project this big, you're talking close to a couple of million dollars of contingency, which means that there's a chance this is going to come in lower. But also, the authority approved at town meeting for this article will be to make sure that we have all the tools necessary to build this. That's built into the article. I bring that up because if we have a couple of million dollars of contingency, there's a very good chance that we'll have eight thousand dollars to buy the groomer out of that because I highly doubt they will spend it all. But I want everybody to know that if we are able to, we'll pay for it out of that. It's not originally budgeted, but based on the contingencies, we should have the flexibility.
I just don't want someone to come and be like, well, that's eight thousand dollars, that wasn't written into something, you know, and like, fight over eight thousand dollars when you're talking millions.
So in full disclosure, the committee really discussed this because we want to be fully transparent as to everything that we're doing. We did not discuss tonight on paper revenue sources because we don't want to oversell it. But as Anthony said, there is a high likelihood that we're going to be able to generate some revenue out of this. But if we come here and we tell you to go do it and it doesn't happen, it would be unfair. So what we're doing is, we're making a proposal that, for lack of a better term, this is worst-case scenario. There's a high likelihood it's going to come in less expensive. There's also a high likelihood that we'll have revenue that is going to offset this. And there's also a high likelihood that that eight thousand dollars out of the groomer is going to be encompassed into the article because I highly doubt we're going to spend close to two million dollars of contingency.
And then I just have a safety question. With the pond there, is that open? Like, so that someone can leave the playground and go into a pond? Because that looks like a fun thing to do. Glenn Turner.
Well, again, it's an existing water feature that is there that is left over from the Russo complex. We really want this to be a real intergenerational park. So while it's going to be wonderful to see kids out there playing sports, we also envision that people are going to be able to sit on a park bench and just do bird watching overlooking that pond. And I don't want anybody to get any ideas, this thing's really shallow. Where you're not going to go in there and learn how to dive, for example. It's only a couple of feet, maybe eight feet at best, but usually it's four, five, six feet at its top. But your concern is legitimate. So we'll have to find that balance. We want to make sure that people have access to the water, sit at a park bench, really enjoy it. But at the same time, we have to keep in mind safety as well.
Yeah, I mean, I've been a parent who's left a kid on a playground while I'm watching a soccer game and, you know, that kind of a thing, so. Thank you, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Hi, Carol Ashton. Thank you for your presentation. You answered a lot of the questions that I had just by listening. One question I have is on the walking paths. Who's developing them and who's taking care of them?
So the development will be part of the bid process when we go out to bid for the entire construction project. That general contractor will be responsible for that. And we will be maintaining those trails as part of the DPW, and that's embedded into that half FTE, a full-time equivalent that Anthony referred to on the operating costs. The trick will be, is that most of this will just be walking paths through the woods. But there'll be a couple of areas that is going to be wet. And as a result, we will put a couple of wooden bridges that are over there. And so, so we will put, the general contractor will put those in. So I imagine our DPW department would be out there, you know, once a week, couple of times a month, just grooming pack the trail, maybe cutting back some overbrush. I'm sure their heavy lifting will be in the spring. And if they do a lot upfront, it won't be so bad except for minor storms.
So this is a wetland area?
Some of it is, if we... Christine, could you pull up where the trails, any picture with the trails? So this here is all dry. This here is all in wetlands. The Conservation Commission has already taken a look at it. So there are different variations of wetlands. This here, you could put trails through, but from a wetland protection act, you can't actually develop four raised structures. But to be able to put a walking trail, you can do that.
Even the bridges?
Yep, because there's no foundation, there's no raised structure to it.
I'm on the commission, so I'm...
No, I know you are. But John Delano and Tim Hay have taken a look at it. And so when I say bridges, I'm not talking like a suspension bridge or Golden Gate Bridge. They're literally three inches off the ground and they're just wood planks that go across it. And those are all over the place in any time that you see wetland walking trails.
In addition, that water, is that a wetland area, or is that something, what was a re... A what? It was man-made?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Carol, what I'll do is, we have some pictures from John Delano that he provided us with those walking bridges or crossovers. I will put it in the presentation for town meeting.
Also, was the open space committee consulted on the walkways? The trails, and that's what they envisioned?
We didn't just talk directly to the open space committee, but John Delano is a member or was a member of it. So whether or not he had the conversation with them, and we are zoned between the two, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
No. There'd be substantial site work. Yes.
Yeah, it still, it has to be fully permitted like any other project. So that's why you build in the contingencies?
Yeah, design would take about three months. That's what we anticipate would start in January. Yep, yeah, that's all a part of this, all the soft costs, all the design, all the engineering. Yep. Questions?
Probably don't need the microphone, but I stand there anyhow. My name's Robert Anderson, I live at 51 Commonwealth Avenue. For full disclosure, I work for the DPW. Came here with one concern, now I've got a few. First and foremost, I think that, you know, an additional $400 or so in taxes to the homeowners of this town is going to be a burden on some people on fixed incomes, definitely. You mentioned more houses being built could defray the cost, bring the cost down. But with that also comes a myriad of other issues, okay? Currently in the DPW, we're operating at a 40-hour deficit. I know we're trying to hire another guy, but we still haven't done that yet. With all due respect, whoever came up with the .5 manpower to maintain that facility has definitely miscalculated, because there's no way a half a guy is going to, that's 20 hours a week, is going to be able to maintain that facility. Just not going to happen in realistic terms. You talk about increased households in the town defraying the costs. Well, I know for a fact that there's already preliminary discussions ongoing about building a new school. So that's another nut you're going to have to crack when, you know, the time comes. So you're talking X amount of dollars extra in your tax bill for, you know, the facility, and you throw in a new school, and that's some big money for some people in this town. Okay? I'm not against this project. Anybody that knows me, I got 15 grandchildren, I love kids, okay? I'm all about the kids, all right? So anything that benefits the youth of this town, I'm for, okay? But I think we need to be realistic about the numbers that we're throwing out there as far as manpower and things of that nature. And then, last but not least, the one concern I did come here with, okay, is that piece of property that we bought on Lincoln Street, okay? For those of you who don't know, I've lived in this town my whole life, so I know the history of that piece of property. Before, it was Russo's, it was a place called Earthworks, greenhouse operation, okay? That was before the time of EPA and things of that nature. So God only knows what was put into that soil during that time. Russo's, I know for a fact, has dumped stuff out on that property. My concern is the health of the people that are going to be using that facility. You know, the government told people it was safe to live at Love Canal, and look what happened there. I would implore the board or the Open Space Committee, whoever has the power to do so, is to do some core samples of the soil out there. Because you're talking about walking trails that are going in and amongst places where chemicals have been dumped. And back in the '50s and the '60s, you know, chemicals like Paraquat, Diagenon, and stuff like that were used and dumped. I've also been told, I don't know this for a fact, that there was asbestos materials dumped out there. So I would like to see some core samples taken of that soil to make sure that it's safe to build on. I know, Dave, you had told me that there's a contingency in the contract that if it finds, if it turns out to be contaminated soil, that Russo's has to pay for the cleanup. I don't think Russo is going to just turn around and say, "Oh, okay, how many millions of dollars is that going to cost us?" I think they're going to fight us in litigation, which is, again, going to cost the town a ton of money. So, you know, I would rather be proactive than reactive and know that the property is safe to build on before I even put a shovel in the ground.
All right, so I don't want to argue whether you should vote for this or not. This is not the purpose of tonight. Tonight was just to give information, and then anything that somebody wants to bring up, obviously, at three weeks, when we have a meeting, you should bring up those concerns. Some people could speak to it. So I just want to, off the top of my head, I think there's three things I want to address. One is, is that the half a person equivalent? I want people to understand, for the most part, we expect this facility to be closed from November through March. That's six months. So it's not 20 hours a week. Because for almost half the year, it won't be used, which means nobody will be out there having to maintain it. We don't expect to plow it, we don't expect to use it, nobody expects to be out there. So that's over the course of an entire year. The second thing is, is that we were concerned when we purchased the property, that I had been told second, third, fourth hand, is that there was lots of pollutants in the property. And Bob, you may have been there that day, but we asked the DPW department to go out with the backhoe and literally tear up the property. We did that. We took pictures, we had our conservation agent out there. He did whatever he had to do. We didn't find anything. That doesn't mean there's nothing out there. We tore it apart. But where we tore apart, where we were told to tear apart, there was nothing there. I don't recall ever saying that Russo was going to pay for anything, because I can definitively tell you, there's no contract on that. The EPA exists, and they could always claw back, that's federal law, they can always go back after previous owners, but there's no contract to that. I've had a conversation with CHA, and I, we are going to do some test pits as part of the project when we go out there. Because if we find contaminated property, we're going to have to do one of two things. We'll have to remediate it for it, or we won't build it. We won't know until we try. But nobody is going to build on the site if it's contaminated. I mean, that's part of everybody that, I mean, just 21st century building at this point, that's part of the project, so we will be doing that. Again, you can't tear up all 16 acres, 12 feet deep, but there is, but there are standards. And you go and you do certain test pits, like you do when you do a septic system, you don't drill a hole everywhere. You drill a handful of holes and take your tests. We'll be doing the exact same thing.
My biggest concern was the health of the people that are going to use that. And maybe this was the wrong forum for, you know, expressing my concerns. Like I said, I don't have a problem with the complex, but I just needed to bring up those concerns.
Just to clarify one item that David had mentioned in regards to it being closed. So with option one, it obviously would not be closed for those six months and would require plowing.
Yes, I'm referring to the trails and the fields and all that stuff, but you're right.
I think if you close it in November, the fields, I think you're doing a disservice to it. The fields to practice on, tons.
Yeah, no problem.
My mom's a club soccer player, and she practices until January.
Let me just amend what I'm saying. There is no organized sports. They close or stop, or whatever word you want to use, sometime in the fall. So at that point, the fields will not be used as an organizational event. But just like our football field, during the summer, there are periods of time that there are no organized sports on it. The residents use it. But obviously, they're not using it at the same level of what an organized team would be using it. That was the intent of what I was trying to say.
Yeah, and just a further... Those are the type of... The town soccer just ended last weekend, so we would have that time between now and when snow starts, which is some parts of the state, but tomorrow. But, you know, around here, you know, we typically don't get snow until, usually, January, so we would have opportunities to use the field then to bring in some...
My daughter's a high school soccer player, and her practice is stopped tomorrow, outdoors. So, and we're going until January, outdoors, so. And then you can establish a relationship with a club where they can come in and work with the kids in the town as well. I mean, I know the kids in the town, the good soccer players in the town, so, I mean, but to establish a relationship with a club, dogfight, yeah.
Dave, just, the idea of this new school could end up being a very big complex, is what I'm hearing, maybe combining two or three of the schools. Have you considered adding this to the school as part of it? Instead of doing this, just make some extra fields on the new school project. And you could also do the baseball field here.
So we had proper school representation on the committee. Bill Flynn, who was the Chair of the School Committee for many years, sits on the committee, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. And Jen Hamel, who's Athletic Director, she's on it. And we've had multiple conversations with the school superintendent, Mark Bodwell, as well. So we received a lot of feedback from them. When you do build a school, you're going to go through the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority, and there are going to be certain terms and conditions, because you're using half of their money to build it, or half of the project cost will come from them, as better said. And they don't typically pay for outdoor athletic fields. So we had been working on this since 2018, and in 2018, there wasn't conversations about building a new school. So there's no doubt that we may be looking at this, and maybe there is a new school coming. I can tell you that as town administrator, my concern is the town as a whole. So there's always funding concerns, but I think that regardless of whether or not we build a new school in 12 months, 36 months, or 72 months, you need fields. Kids are already here, and there's more coming. MSBA only meets once a year. They meet in December of every single year to vote on their projects. It's very rare that they approve at the first year of semittal, which we just did. But that doesn't mean it won't. But let's assume that they do. You're still probably talking three to four years before that building gets built, because you have lots of processes you have to go through, and then you still have to go through the bidding process. If it doesn't get awarded in year one, it gets in year two or year three. When you built this, it was awarded either year three or year four. So you really had about a 10-year period from when people first envisioned this new school to when you could actually move in. So if people don't want to fund this, I get it, I fully understand it, it makes all the sense in the world, because money is money. But that doesn't make the issue go away. And so that's why we thought that we just had to bring it to the town. It's one of the reasons that I love town meeting. There are reasons I don't like it, but there are some reasons I love town meeting, because you get to decide what your priorities are going to be. So we felt at this point it was just appropriate to bring the information, and then you get to make that decision, whether you want to do it now or you want to try to do it later.
Do we have to be discussing whether to have Russo's sports on the intergenerational facility, have a basketball court indoors, or not? That's how that, beyond the money aspect, a new school, we would have to provide a point of where we take out and what we potentially build and what we should...
I think it's doubtful that two fields would fit on any of the potential school sites as well. Any other questions? Comments?
The main concern is a lot of soccer, right? So how can we make it so players can practice in the winter? Like, you know, in the winter months, like, for instance, like, if the gym gets put up, would it be possible to make so that soccer players would be able to practice indoors? And I've played soccer my whole life, and I feel like indoors is really where you get the most skill from, like, you know, a basketball court type of thing. So is, would it be possible to add like a couple smaller halls for indoor soccer type thing for the gym?
Yeah, I guess I'll speak to it. I know, you know, as Al's commented earlier, my daughter partially bought it from the previous one, which is indoors. I know, from speaking on the house myself and my own child, I really just bring some soccer nets into the gym that actually builds anything specifically permanent in there, but just have some soccer nets. As you saw during the presentation when I spoke about it, there was ample amount of storage, although we always said there's never enough storage, but that's definitely something we can entertain, is to be able to use that gym to offer puts on.
And I did see, like, a player's fee kind of stuff, like, what was that, a ball, like, is that for, like, a year or anything for a player?
No, you can go with the fee.
You know, for youth sports, whether it's the football organization or the Youth Athletic Association, it would likely be an increase in fees to defray some of the costs that those organizations would cover in terms of the lighting or maintenance or things like that, whatever falls on us, you know. For the YAA, for example, you know, we cover all the maintenance of the ball field, so if we do renovations to the fields, we pay for it out of our organization. We use that for revenue generated from the stack chat or fundraising or just the fees in general. So there might be an increase in, you know, a nominal increase in fees for registrations for the sports to offset some of that money.
Other questions? No? All right, well, we thank you all for coming. December 5th is the town meeting right here in this auditorium. We hope to see you all then. Thank you for coming.